All right, I call the meeting to order. Does this stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee Dante. Trustee May.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Kay, is there any public comment? Oh, you're already up there, Melissa.
Melissa Kair speaking. Please turn off the public Wi-Fi in the township buildings when the buildings are closed to save energy, and vote against tax increment finance districts because they cause schools to forego property tax money for the current students, hoping that future students will get more. Do you vote on the joint review boards of the tax increment finance districts?
Yes, we're on the, for the tips, we are usually on the boards if it affects us.
Okay. The schools and the townships shall not bet with property tax money.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we have the, next is the consent agenda. Authorization for payroll bills, town fund, general assistance, road and sewer. And then the supervisor's report is social services, unemployment, the employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, and transportation and financial reports. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, second. Any discussion, any questions on these reports or authorizations? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Okay, discussion and action on approval for the minutes. We're looking to approve the minutes for December 19th, a regular board meeting, and December 19th, the executive session minutes.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Now, presentations, we have Corey Dewey here to provide her annual report to the board on social services. If you remember, we ask each of the department heads to come in and do a presentation to the board just to keep us updated and aware of what's going on in each department.
Short, I gotta make sure that it. Perfect. All right, everyone, thanks for having me again. Can you guys hear okay? I can't tell if the microphone's on or not. Perfect. So my name is Corey Dewey. I am the Director of Social Services and Community Outreach here at the township. So I wanted to do a little bit of a review from the last presentation that I did regarding our department and just some updates, some new things that we're doing, and then a couple of numbers from the stuff that we've done in this last year. So our department, Social Services Department, encompasses five staff members. There's me. Then we have two case managers. And actually, something pretty exciting as we're expanding the department, adding new services, we decided it would be beneficial to do a little bit of a new structure. So Andrea Correio has actually accepted the position of Associate Director today, which is really exciting, so that will be a little bit of a change and help us expand some of our services. We have also added the position of older adult programming and benefit specialist. We have seen an increase of the amount of seniors in our area that are on a fixed income. And as their income is staying the same, their expenses are rising. And so we're seeing more and more of those folks coming to us for assistance. So we really thought it would be nice to have a position that could specifically help those older folks that come through our doors. And then, of course, me and our staff, something that's unique about our staff is three of these staff members are fluent in Spanish and one fluent in Polish, which those are the two main foreign languages that are spoken within our community. So that is really beneficial. And then, of course, we use translation services for any other language someone might want to use when they come and see us. So I would like to read the mission of our departments, a little bit different than the mission of the township in general because we're going to focus more on this holistic approach that we focus on. So it is our mission of Elk Grove Township Office of Social Services to empower individuals and families by providing exceptional social services, programs, and resources. Through collaboration with schools, churches, businesses, and other social service agencies, we strive to develop public and private partnerships and enhance the lives of those in our community. It is incredibly rare that we would have an individual or a household come to us in need, and we don't have to utilize another entity in order to assist them or empower them in helping this problem. It's very rare that we say, oh, we've got this right here, boom, fixed. That's typically a Band-Aid. So we'll figure out holistically what this household needs in order to sustain moving forward. Again, not a handout, but a hand up. And we know that financially healthy families in our community help everyone because then they're contributing to businesses in the area, they're contributing to the grocery stores and the movie theaters and keeping everyone wanting to live in this community. So it benefits everyone. So just some examples of how we might go about doing this. This is one of those slides that I had used last year. And I'd like to give an example of something that we might see pretty frequently that might come into our door. So we might have, let's say, recently I had a father who was a single father, had gone through the divorce proceedings with his wife, who was struggling with some mental health issues, the wife was. So she was out of the picture. So working with him and the Sheriff's Department in ordering to locate her, to relinquish some of those rights so he could get some benefits for those kiddos of his, and working with the school district to do that, we might think, yeah, that's cut and dried. Wouldn't you think to contact the woman? Well, this individual just did not know where to start. So we're that door that a lot of people come through and go, I know this might seem easy to someone else, but I don't know where to start. I don't know where to look on the Internet. I don't know what number to call. Okay, so we're going to contact the Sheriff's Department. We're going to work with Health and Family Services to make sure that your household is receiving all medical benefits, all food benefits you can be receiving. And this individual was also incredibly underemployed. So we got him connected to our employment specialist, that's John Chalikian. So I know we're going to go into detail in another meeting about those specific services, but our employment center, last year John worked with nearly 100 residents, helping them build their resume, working on job skills. A lot of those folks that are underemployed, they might not necessarily be unemployed. That's the trend that he's kind of seeing because we know right now it's, I don't want to say easy to find a job, but probably easier than it has been traditionally in the last 10 years. But sometimes when jobs are easier to come by, they might not be the best jobs and the best fit for people. So let's get something that's close to home. We're not spending money on fuel, and we're getting the most that we can in the workday. Of course, we're then going to use our services. Okay, is this individual eligible for emergency assistance? Are they eligible for Community Empowerment Fund? What else can we do? We utilize funds through the Salvation Army. That is another partner that we have. We are trained especially, and we have certification, to do applications for the Salvation Army. So we can do grants for folks in this area of up to $600. And I love to utilize those funds because that can free up some of our township funds because I like to see, okay, what else are you eligible for before we dip into those funds? So typically, we can solve a lot of problems using those funds by being one of their partners. We always make sure someone is screened for the mobile dental clinic. Mobile dental clinic, it's 250% of federal poverty level. So a household of four typically making under $40,000 on average. So making sure that dental health is taken care of, that's just something off their plate. Making sure that all of our clients know about the pantry and hopefully are utilizing the pantry. Again, it's not a requirement. If someone doesn't want to, we'll figure out what barriers, why they don't want to. Do we not have the food choices do you want? Are you afraid you're going to see someone? What could be the barrier and how do we overcome that? Again, with our food pantry, just a reminder, there's no income guidelines. Some other townships do have income guidelines because of inventory issues. We don't have that problem. We have enough food to go around. So as long as you live within the township, you can utilize our food pantry, and we encourage it. We recognize that there's a lot of people that on paper might look middle-class, but as long as they want to keep their daughter in dance or they want to keep their kid in private tutoring to get them ahead, and then the grocery bill is something that gets cut, so they just need a little bit more help in that area. And then, of course, I have lie heap up there. Those are those CETA programs that we are trained and contracted through the state to be able to provide. So that is typically hundreds of dollars for folks in Illinois to assist with their water, gas, and electric bills, which is really helpful. So I would like to go individually into some of those services that we do provide. So keep in mind that when I go through the services that we actually provide and track, this is probably 25% of the actual services we're actually providing because we're going to be a network source. I'm going to meet with this individual, make sure they're utilizing every service that we provide, and then figuring out, okay, with our funded agencies, what are they eligible for? What can we help them with? And then even beyond that, how can we help them further? So general assistance is a state-mandated program. General assistance is the most important thing we do, and it's a legal obligation for townships in Illinois. So that falls directly under Supervisor Bussie, that program. General assistance is for those that are basically indigent and have no other state or federal benefits that they're able to collect from. The most common type of client that you'll see on general assistance is someone who is, they have to be between 18 and 62. And typically, well, they're either job searching, but more commonly, they are disabled. So they're either physically, mentally disabled, or both, and they're applying for disability. You know, applying for disability can take a while. It can be a couple of months. It could be a couple of years until that person is approved. And in the meantime, if they have no funds, what do they do? So they can apply through monthly grants through the township. Our township grant amount is $750, but that goes directly towards vendors. So that has to go towards shelter costs, directly to a landlord and mortgage company, directly towards NICOR, directly towards COMED, so on and so forth. Really basic maintenance fee. The next portion is emergency, and then, excuse me, with general assistance, if they then are approved for SSI, the township does get paid back that portion that has been paid out. But that's a, it's more of a safety net for folks in Illinois, actually in the entire country. Emergency assistance, again, is a really specific program. It also falls in a state-mandated handbook. For emergency assistance, what we're looking at, a household has to be below 300% of federal poverty level. So that income guideline's a little bit higher than average, which is good, helps more people. There has to be an emergency that we can prove. Maybe that's a loss of job, a death in the family, a medical emergency, a major car accident. They have to be able to sustain moving forward. So if someone comes to me and says, hey, I lost my job, I filed for unemployment, they denied me. Can you pay my rent this month? No, I'm sorry, we cannot. We need proof of sustainability, so we need to secure a new job so you're not in that situation the next month. So we need sustainability moving forward. And we also need to resolve the emergency. So if someone comes to us and they owe $2,000 in rent, and we can award them 1,400, we need a plan to compensate for that 600. Is other funding we apply for? Can you borrow from a friend? Do you have that $600 in savings? Can you cancel your cable? Can you minimize your phone bill? How can we compensate for that? This was a little bit tougher during COVID because unfortunately with those different laws, folks weren't being evicted. And so they might come to us and, hey, I owe 10 months in rent. Can you assist us? No. At that point, those problems became a little bit too larger. But we're not seeing that so much anymore because that was tough. So my department, along with the other departments, we can utilize the Community Empowerment Fund. So again, I know you guys are familiar with that, but that's a separate 501(c)(3) that we have. If there is a circumstance where there is an immediate need for a household within the township and there's no other government program or other nonprofit agency that can assist them, we can dip into that fund. Again, most common example that I always think of is our seniors who had a horrible rat infestation and were getting injured from it. You know, where else can we go to get that fixed? We dipped into that and got that problem resolved for them. A new program, which is really exciting, under that older adult programming and benefit specialist, is the SHIP program, that Senior Health Insurance Program. So Miriam Herrera, one of our staff members, she is trained in SHIP. It's a really intensive training program that she completed. So she can help people Medicare age or aging onto Medicare, look at those different plans and decide what's best for them. So that's awesome because, you know, you see those commercials on TV asking people to call. This is no incentive or agenda. She's just printing off plans and explaining them and going through. When the newsletter went to print, she had assisted 55 people so far because she was just newly trained. And now she's assisted over 82 people I just polled. So that's wonderful. She's also helping with state benefit assistance. With Department of Human Services, so Medicaid and SNAP, you mostly have to do everything online now. Since COVID, it's very hard to just walk in and get an appointment and do that application. So they're expecting people to do it online because it is easier. But our older population is very confused by this process. So we've opened up her position to be able to assist people in doing that. So far, she's assisted 102 households since June in applying for those benefits. We also do senior wellness check-ins. This started during COVID. So our seniors who are, some are homebound, but most, they all live alone, limited family, we do call them bi-monthly, or no, excuse me, not bi-monthly, twice a month just to check in on them. This is not a therapy session. It's just a concrete need. You know, do you have food right now? How is your, is your NICOR bill doing okay? Has your dog been able to be walked? Just an extra service that most other townships don't do. And if we find that they need an extended need beyond that, we will.
Corey, one question.
Yes.
Is that, so the general assistance, emergency assistance, is the core mandated responsibility that we have, that the state mandates for us to do? And then the community empowerment helps subsidize when that's not, when that doesn't meet the full need sometimes?
Exactly.
And then this page, SHIP, state's benefit assistance, senior wellness check-ins, falls under that older adults program that you're developing.
Exactly.
Along with the transportation that we provide. And these other ones that we're going to talk about are services that we're providing above and beyond the core mandated.
Absolutely. The only thing that is state-mandated for townships is the emergency and general assistance. And everything else that this department does is above and beyond. You can, in other townships, they provide different services. All townships, they kind of look at their constituents and they determine what is, what do they need and what's the best fit. If we had a large, you know, population with a certain need, we would then look and review a different program, yeah. So one thing I did want to highlight on that next page, though. So the lie heap and lie watt program, that's for assistance for electricity, gas, and water. We have, since September, we have processed 500 applications. So we are breaking records on that, which is fabulous. On average, when someone does that program, they typically get about $500 to $600 in assistance. So that times 500, I can't do that math quickly, but it's a lot of funds. And then funds that, they're not coming to us for emergency assistance. It's stuff that they're entitled to through the state.
Could you explain what the acronym means?
Yeah, absolutely. So that is Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. And then newly, the state has opened that up for water. So that's Low Income Home Water Assistance Program, which is fabulous. They're awesome programs, and the intention, of course, is to keep someone warm in their home with electricity and water. There's another program that people can qualify for through the state called weatherization. If they're homeowners, we help people apply for this. It's an extensive process, but we get quite a few people approved. And the state will actually go in with selected vendors and get their home insulated and weatherproofed, so then their energy bills are lower. So that can be insulation, it can be windows, you know, what attic fixes, all those types of things. Same thing with furnace. If someone is a homeowner and their furnace is broken or inoperable, we can get them approved to have the state go in and get them a new furnace. Again, we talked about mobile dental clinic. So that is anyone within the township that's below 250% of federal poverty can register for the mobile dental clinic. It is a bus, I think I had a picture on that last slide. But it's a bus that is fully equipped as a dentist office. It's at our location, usually about five times a month. They schedule with the hospital. It's a partnership with Northwest Community Hospital. And we fund that along with Schaumburg, Palatine, and Wheeling Township. We also provide, we are a partner for the One Site Program through Lenscrafters. I think last year, I remember, I did not mention this. This is something that we register for, and we do training to keep up a partnership status with them every year. So clients that are at a certain poverty level, same as lie heap, they can actually register with us and receive an eye exam and a prescription pair of eyeglasses once a year. NICOR Sharing is another program that we can apply for. If someone is, heat is about, is in the verge of being turned off, but they're higher income level, we can make sure that heat is not turned off. We've got a medical lending closet, so that's wheelchairs, walkers, commodes, shower chairs. And this year, I pulled this number, we have had, how many people? 110 people rent things out from the medical lending closet, which is great. And we get donations all the time for that, so it's a really nice program. Again, I talked about that Salvation Army Extension Site. This is such a great partnership because not only can we free up our funds as a township and use them in other ways, but also this partnership with Salvation Army, you don't need a social security number for that program. So sometimes if we have parents that come in, their kids have socials and parents don't, we might be able to utilize that to assist them. And then we also do applications for access to care. So that's for uninsured and underinsured before people are approved for Medicaid to make sure just they're insured in that gap in the meantime. Again, we do a lot of different seasonal programs, so I'll just highlight some of them that we provide. We do Thanksgiving baskets. We do a program for the holidays for kids, for parents to be able to purchase gifts for their kids. We do the Super Bowl, so that is the school district collecting soup cans around Super Bowl time, which is going to be now. We do boots, mittens, gloves, hats, all of that for kids who need them in the school district. We do the back-to-school supply drive in the spring, or excuse me, in the fall, which actually, I want to highlight that program because I think we do that, I shouldn't say better than others, but I think it's different how we do it, and I think the school districts really like how we do it. So typically, someone will do a backpack drive filled with stuff, and parents will come and they'll bring their kids, and they'll register, and they take their backpack home, and then they go to school prepared, which is fabulous. We need those types of programs. But that really needs a parent or grandparent to take the child to do that and to register them. And sometimes that doesn't happen. The parents don't do that. And then the kids still show up unprepared on the first day of school. And we all know how much money teachers spend out of their pocket on school supplies every single year. So instead, what we do is we take all of those donations, and then we box them up, and we give them directly to the schools. So we work with District 57, District 59, the parochial schools. We provide them those donations, tell them, you know, put this in the teacher's lounge, and then the teachers can replenish their classrooms for the year. You know, the markers get dry, the kids need folders. Tommy showed up and his pencils are all broken because mom didn't buy new ones, whatever it is. Just making sure those kids are prepared. We also, we handle the food pantry intakes, too, in my department. So we're not coordinating the donations and the stocking of shelves and the shopping, but we do screen the clients, making sure the residency requirement is met, that they live within the township, making sure that they have their card, we have their documents, and everything is up to date.
And you were going to add, we're looking to add to that also then, sort of a checklist to see if there are other issues that maybe.
Yep, absolutely. So of course, as I said, we take a holistic approach to every single client that comes through. We're going to make sure they're utilizing everything that we have to offer. But we have been talking more about making that a little bit more of a streamlined concept where we can track it better. So everyone that comes in, and also that's ensuring to us. So someone comes in and we let them know, vice versa. They come in for financial assistance, I'm going to refer them to the pantry. Someone comes in for pantry, we're going to refer them to everything the township has to offer, from passports to counseling session to seeing us. And so typically, we'll have that conversation with them. And it's, it might be a little bit more information that, oh my gosh, I didn't know the township did all of this. So we're going to more create a document where we can go through and screen them, let them know everything they could be eligible for, and then make sure that we have their information to follow up with them later. Because a lot of times I might see someone say, yeah, I'll use the pantry, but maybe next month. I just don't have time today. No, I want to be able to follow up with you and, hey, what were the barriers? Did we not have the food that you wanted? Were you nervous to go there? Does that time of day not work for you? So just making sure that they're utilizing everything that they are entitled to by being a township resident. So yes, so that is the gist of what we do in Social Services Department. We're always really busy, and we like it that way. It's an exciting department, and we're just here to help people. So thank you for letting me present. Does anyone have any questions? Vince?
No. So the township supports, you know, a whole variety of outside.
Yes.
Do you work with them also?
Yes. So what we do is, again, so of course, yeah, we fund different agencies within the township. So those different agencies do a slew of different things. But absolutely, so with us funding them, A, we know those agencies inside and out and what they do and what they can provide for our residents. And then also with those particular agencies, I don't hate to say we have a foot in, but if I have, you know, Mr. Jones, and I refer him to one of those funded agencies, I'm going to give that warm handoff because we do fund them. So I'm going to say, you know, hey, Executive Director, I've got Mr. Jones here. This is the program I'd like him to be screened for. Because we know sometimes if someone calls, maybe their phone call gets shuffled to the bottom or they're not saying the right thing. So yeah, we always try to make sure if we're not the answer, that then one of those agencies gets them the right answer and services them as best they can.
No, that's a very good point, though, because the agency grants are focused on those. And that's what the Agency Grant Committee does, is make sure that we're focused on the agencies that support us and support our programs and make sure that we're not, that our funds are going where it benefits our residents the best and make sure that we're not duplicating things or we're not supporting programs that don't involve Elk Grove Township residents. So there's a, the Agency Grant Committee does a review of all these grants that we're giving and then makes sure, by coordinating with the directors of the different departments, that the agencies we're funding are ones that really matter to us. And the ones that primarily use them are your department and Luan's, right? The Adult and Family Counseling.
Transportation.
Yeah.
A couple of those programs. But yeah, and then that's nice because when we review those agencies, we'll know, yeah, they answer their phones, they get a client in for intake really quickly. Are those agencies, you know, it's really hard, and then we'll work with them. You know, why is it so hard for our clients to get an appointment with you guys or to, you know, get a, whatever it might be. So, Trustee Dante, did you have a question?
Yeah, so the older adult, that's a newer.
Position.
Position. Where are the referrals coming from?
So that's a good question. I would say when she became a trained SHIP counselor, so that gets put on the Department of Aging's website, that we have that here within the township. So we do get a lot of referrals from the Illinois Department of Aging. However, most of those referrals have been in-house, clients that we work with consistently. But it might be an older adult who exceeds the assistance that we can provide in a typical setting where then we'll refer to Miriam. You know, Miriam can assist you in renewing your SNAP benefits, doing your Medicaid, making sure your SSI is good, your AABD, where that's typically something that we were telling them. You know, it's not really what we do here. We don't really have time to assist. So that's why we're dedicating this position to make the time because it's incredibly time-consuming appointments that she's doing. So those two places, Department of Aging, Kenneth Young Center, because they work with a lot of older adults, and then, you know, internal when we meet with someone.
So some of those referrals that are coming directly from, let's just say, the Village of Mount Prospect or Elk Grove themselves?
Um, yes, certainly. Some of them are, they.
The reason I'm asking is the crossover.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know the villages themselves are doing some sort of social services, right?
Sure, 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 sure. So they, yep, so they do as well. They have, so those, I don't, Elk Grove doesn't per se have an older adult or, you know, senior population department in the same way maybe Arlington Heights or the Village of Mount Prospect does. But I do not, I don't see mirror image of kind of what Miriam is doing. But that I'm not sure because I do know that they have case numbers. I'd have to look in kind of exactly what they're doing for those older folks. But we certainly, you know, the older population that she's working with come from all of our villages. She's not seeing a trend particularly from one place. We're seeing people from Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Displanes, Rolling Meadows, everywhere, so.
I think that's one of the reasons for the Social Service Review and Improvement Committee is they're going to be looking at. is they're going to be looking at not just what services, whether the services we provided are needed and whether they're efficient or if we're missing services, but also look at duplication, look at what other, other communities are providing and seeing where we can maybe cooperate, where maybe there's a hole, where maybe we're duplicating somebody else. But the bottom line is, in most cases, is we're the core competency in these areas. We're the, we're the ones that have been, that are providing the social services for, you know, 100 years or so, and we're focused specifically on this. Well, and Elk Grove is a good example of a village that has deferred to us in terms of social services in most ways. I mean, they have Elk Grove, Elk Grove Cares, which is a drug abuse program, which we refer people to, to their program. But generally speaking, they defer to us substitute, substitute teaching at Elk Grove High School. Usually they defer to us the responsibility for social services. Mount Prospect has been a little bit more, they don't do as, anywhere near as much as us, but there is some overlap there that...
That's why I asked the question.
Cory's, Cory's working on and, and that we've, in some ways, you know, to say it, the taxpayer is being taxed twice for the same thing.
Okay. And then my next question, Cory, is, is part of the Community Empowerment Fund speaks to the 200% below poverty level, correct? Is that, is that how it, we were...
Our, so the Community Empowerment Fund, we have, we have a board and we have guidelines. So in order to be approved, yeah, our guidelines are, actually, our guidelines are 300% below the federal poverty level, and the reason for that is Lieheep and those programs are typically 250. And we thought, well, if someone comes to us and they're at 290%, they're still low income in this area, so how can we, you know, free up some funds to a system? So that was the intentional purpose of making that, that income level.
Okay. So that's why I was asking, because I knew in the beginning we talked about the 200 and where the separation then began with the emergency being 300.
Yep.
Now they're the same. Or they're, the emergency and/or the Community Empowerment Fund, the percentage below, below poverty level is the exact same?
Correct.
For the most part.
Yeah, Community Empowerment Fund, I think, yeah, is a little bit higher. And that reason, that's the exact reason, because if someone comes to us and they're just, you know, $10 over, because these state and township amounts as well, if someone comes to me for an emergent, for emergency assistance in the last 30 days, they're $6 over that income threshold, it goes into a computer system, it's a denial. So it's a state mandated number, so, yeah. And so with CEF, that's the intention to make it a little bit more flexible.
Well, thank you. I mean, I think what you do is fantastic.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions for Cory? Thank you, Cory.
You're welcome.
And I would say that her department is becoming increasingly important to what we do. I mean, obviously, the road and bridges is now, has been disestablished and we're, the board, the supervisor and the board are running that. We've outsourced everything. Our resources, because the road, the number of roads we have is going away and probably someday it'll, I don't know, maybe, maybe Elk Grove won't fully take over all, they're unincorporated, but I'm sure Mount Prospect will eventually. So that part of our responsibilities is declining and we're reallocating our resources more towards social services and related, related areas, youth and family counseling, the youth services, those areas where the demand is growing because of the changes in demographics and because of the gaps in the funding that's there between municipalities and county. And we're, we're filling that, that space there. The Assessor's Office is always going to be essential because they're the only ones that provide tax assistance and tax, taxpayer advocacy. This however, and that's growing because taxes keep getting, making it more onerous for everyone. But the social services is the other side of that. While they're dealing with all taxpayers, social services is dealing with those, with problems, with issues that can't be really addressed anywhere else except with us or with our partners, agencies that we've established relationships with. Is there anything else, Cory, that you have?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cory. And now let's go to reports, the Assessor's Report.
Well, you have my written report, but I'm going to have to amend it. It was interesting the last couple of weeks. We were told two different times, two different dates that we were going to be open for appeals and then it didn't happen, which is always frustrating when you gear up for something and nothing happens. Well, then we were told, and we actually believed them, and so we sent out about 8,000 emails and 900 robo calls to our taxpayers, let them know that they could come in and file an appeal with the Board of Review. Unfortunately, that one was wrong too. So the day after Martin Luther King's birthday, we were, of course, were extremely busy with taxpayers coming in to want to do an appeal for which the board was, had not opened us yet. However, we're in a position that we could do pre-files. So everybody who came in, we did a pre-file, hit the button saying, hey, if we need to put documentation with this later on, so there was no harm, no foul to the taxpayer. And finally, we were open that Thursday, when it finally appeared on the Board of Review website. So that's been irritating. Other than that, the next problem that we faced is that we have seen about 80% of the people coming in saying they have not yet received their results letters from Fritz Kegge's office. Now that, we were certified as of the 12th of January, which meant that's when those letters were to go out. Now, in just looking at the people that are telling us this, it's not one post office, so they can't tell us, well, it's just one post office. I notified the county last week, which is also a frightening situation because if you recall during our triennial reassessment, they sent out 23,000 reassessment notices with the wrong exemptions on them. So it's almost terrifying to call them and telling, tell them that they've made yet another mistake because there is a wave effect, that if we get another oops letter, we get another wave of people going, why did I get this letter? As of Friday, I was supposed to have a call back from Assessor Kegge's Chief of Staff, however, I have received radio silence. So have no idea if they've identified the problem. There's been any number of ways that we've tried to communicate with the taxpayers to let them know now is the time, whether you've got your letter or not. And of course, we've got an outreach program coming up a week from tomorrow, to which you are all invited, with the Board of Review. And as an aside there, they split Elk Grove Township into two pieces, which I thought was insane. So Elk Grove Township now has two commissioners representing it instead of one. It used to be that years ago it was just Dan Patlack, then it was just Tammy Went. Well, now it is Commissioner Steele and Commissioner Cardenas. So obviously, Commissioner Cardenas wanted to do an outreach program, and I said, you know, that's fine, we, you know, we want to cooperate with you, we want this information out to our taxpayers, but wouldn't it be better if both commissioners came? Because our taxpayers aren't going to know who truly represents them. So at this point, both Commissioner Steele and Commissioner Cardenas will be here a week from tomorrow night. So there is that.
What time is that?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay. If any of the trustees want to attend, you're certainly welcome to attend, and it may be, maybe educational in some ways, maybe not so much because of what you learned, but because of what you see?
It seems like the largest part of the presentation is introducing the local politicians. Just saying. Everybody has a table and their representatives, the presentation's about 20 minutes long. My staff will be there to take appointments because what the board usually does is hand out paper, applications or appeals. Well, that might be great for somebody back in the Stone Ages, but you need comparables. Do they have comparables? No, they're going to have to come and see us or see a realtor to get comparables and that sort of thing. So we found that we're able to control flow better by appointments. So staff will be here, two of my staff will be here to take appointments for anybody who needs help. What the, what the Assessor's Office and the Board of Review is looking to do is eventually put this all online for people. Well, as Cory so eloquently phrased it, our seniors are intimidated by, you know, computer forms and what if I did this wrong? You know, now I'm, you know, I'm not going to get the results I want. So we found that it works out very well just to do a slot, have them come in. For those that did not get their results letters, that's the first thing we're doing is letting them know. And I would say 95% of the time, we're telling them they got no reduction. So that's why our, you know, we're seeing a lot of people now, simply because as the old saying goes, no mother has an ugly baby. So Assessor Kegge doesn't think there's anything wrong with his assessments. So we'll see how we do with the Board of Review. The other thing, I hate to take up this much time, but it's problematic. Staff and I have been doing a lot of research on land values. And as you know, particularly in some of our older municipalities, there's not a lot of vacant land left. For example, in our entire township, from '22 back three years, there were only three vacant parcels of land that were sold. And what we noticed was that the Assessor's Office has jacked up land values. You'll, you know, if somebody looks at their reassessment, well, you know, the building, the improvement, the home stays the same, but they're noticing a higher value and it's in the land values, and they've been very cagey about it. All of the neighborhoods are exactly the same on land values. So you can't even go back and try and formulate an appeal based upon lack of uniformity on the land value because it's uniform. My problem with it is I don't see how you can take three data points and change 23,000 parcels. But he can. So I've been dealing with Adam Pollak down at the Board of Review. He's Chief of Staff and he has always been their land specialist. And I sent them all of our data, and it wasn't just our data, but I also sent him data from Schaumburg, Wheeling, Maine, Palatine, and Hanover, just to show them, you know, why we're so concerned. And it was from him that I learned, that the first they learned of this problem was in the Lakeview area in Chicago. And they were not aware of it until some very angry taxpayers went to their state rep, the state rep went to them. But I have to admit, I am not, I don't hold out a lot of hope for whether or not that they're going to see their work way clear, simply because Kegge was very smart and the neighborhoods are uniform. So that's what we've been dealing with. It takes a lot of time to go through this kind of data and it's very disheartening when you know that once you've gone through all of the data and you submitted what's going on, that there's not a remedy for our taxpayers.
Yeah, I'm aware of a property in Mount Prospect, a vacant property, that went from 245,000 to 645,000, and the market value's about 250.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean...
And what's, what's irritating with, we were told by the, by the Assessor's Office, they don't look at appraisals anymore because you pay an appraisal and he'll tell you anything you want to hear. Well, you, excuse me, but you've just insulted an entire profession that has a code of ethics. It's...
Well, they should be talking.
Yeah, well, there you go. But, you know, I have to tell you, I have dealt with Tom Hines, I have dealt with Jim Houlihan, I have dealt with Joe Berrios. And if my hair were not gray now, it certainly would be with dealing with Fritz Kegge's office. It's been, it's been Mr. Toad's wild ride, and there's nothing that leads me to believe that it is going to continue.
Okay. Are you doing, are you doing the appeals for property as well too, or just residents?
We're trying to, we look at it, and we have the three sales, you know, from Elk Grove Township in the last three years.
Yeah.
That's all we can do.
Right, right. Okay, any questions for Connie?
Can a taxpayer access the results letter online?
Yes. Yeah, it will show up, you put in your PIN or your address, it goes, you can either search by address or search by PIN. It says you search by PIN, hit I'm not a robot, and get your information. And the one other thing that you want to look at is are your characteristics accurate? You know, because that can be a problem. That's data from years back. And, you know, we've seen a lot of that too, that, you know, at which...
Lot of square footage.
Yeah.
When you say characteristics, what do you mean?
Square footage, you know, two-car garage, when they only have a one-car garage, or no garage. That's why it's, that's why we do our outreach programs and that's why we try and communicate with our taxpayers, because there are errors. And you would be astounded, the people that are very bright and very astute, who don't have any exemptions on their property. You know, nobody teaches civics anymore and nobody certainly teaches property tax law. So these are things that we deal with. I mean, we've had people get refunds in the tens of thousands of dollars when they finally get their exemptions, and we can go back three years.
Okay. Anything else? If not, thank you, Connie. Sue Ellen, clerk?
Okay. I have a written report. We just had one FOIA in December. They wanted the information from the purchase price of our last property, and Administrator Piat got that information to them. The Agency Grant Committee has completed the reviews and the presentations and have our final grant amounts as of this morning. And all employees and elected officials have completed the required sexual harassment prevention training. So that's done.
All right, good. All right, Supervisor's Report. I want to thank those of you that participated, were able to participate in the party, the holiday party. I think it was very well received by the staff, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to spend a little time with the staff in more of a social setting. So I think it went very well, and I appreciate the, the elected officials helping cover the cost of the liquor, which the township's not allowed to do. But, so thank you very much in that regard. We have coming up in the beginning of February, the first meeting for the Social Services Review Committee, as you, which relates back to what Cory was talking about, how do we try to manage our programs, making sure that we're, we're putting our resources where it's best used or that it, it will be used better. And this is a committee that will be reviewing all our social services, adult family counseling, youth, transportation, food pantry programs, and coming up with a report in terms of findings and recommendations to the board once a year. This is a committee that also will transition into that decennial, decennial, state mandated decennial board, that's once every 10 years. That will be, this, this board will report to us, our township board will report to us by June, and then right after that, we'll be sending, it'll transition into a decennial board to provide, to do the report that's required by the state. Once that report's done, it's not needed to be done again for 10 years, then that committee will transition back into just being a township, township board. So it was sort of fortuitous that we set up this Social Services Review Board because in a way it'll be doing much of the same thing that the decennial's going to require us to do. So Dick is the chairman, Vince is the vice chairman, we have two members of our, our staff, Cory and Luanne, on there, and then we have two residents, and we're supposed to have a third. Unfortunately, the third participant... Unfortunately, the third participant she was have, had to step down, and we'll be looking for a third, third member, third resident member. Um, so anyway, uh, that's, that's that, and looking forward to that getting started. Um, we also, under surplus, you know, we, we approved, you, you all approved the surplus for the, the Roden Bridge Department. Uh, we were able to sell, sell the Mack truck. Uh, we sold it to Northfield for about 100,000, 100,000, which is nice. That will go into, that'll go into, the, back into the Roden Bridge Fund, which will then be used to pay down the construction loan that we, or the loan that we made to the Roden Bridge. So, net-net, the, the town fund benefits from this. Um, we, we will also be, Paul will also be, um, selling off the chipper and the trailer and the lawn mower. Those will probably go through auction, it'll look probably likely. And we're keeping the small truck with plow, so that Art can do our parking lot. Our IGAs with Mount Prospect and the village do not include our parking lot, uh, so Art will be doing that. And we'll also be keeping the front-end loader, and the front-end loader will be used for the food pantry, for pallets. Um, and we'll be getting Kayle, is it Kayle, who are we gonna be get, we're gonna get Kaylee certified on the front-end loader? Yeah, we'll get her certified, so that, we don't have to, but I wanna do that, because I don't wanna take any issues with liability. Um, that's, with that, um, we are in the process, we're waiting for the, um, for the State of Illinois, the, um, the Environmental Protection Agency, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to come back with their SRP, or the, the SRP to come back with a no further, no further remediation required. Uh, the package was accepted and apparently approved by the, uh, by the, uh, the IPA, um, Illinois Environmental Protection Agent, IEP-A. Um, and so we, um, and it was approved through the, through the SRP program, which is a different program than the one we were originally in. This one moves quicker and is a little bit easier for us to work through. So we should be getting our NFR shortly. We've moved ahead with the construction before we got it, because our consultant said it's, it's done. So, um, that gives us, when we get that NFR, that really, that means that we have no issues with doing the construction bike safety challenge, parking lot, parking, we did the fence already, those things. Um, I will mention one other one is the, um, is the Employment Center, um, which is a nice little resource we have, allows us to do a more holistic approach. If somebody comes in the food pantry and we find out that the issue they're there is because they don't have a job, we can refer them there. The emphasis there had been a little bit more on what John, on resume, writing your resume, doing interview skills and that focus. We're, we're finding that we need to shift that focus a little more to job opportunities. So trying to build a, on our new website, a, um, a site that lists jobs, that will develop hopefully relationships with these, with the various, um, industrial companies, with the various businesses in, in Elk Grove, Elk Grove Township, where we can, where we'll get a flow of, of information as to what jobs are available. And we will stay, would develop a, a site, or within our website, a site to go to, to find jobs. And then they can come, either go directly or come through us, and we will offer them the resume building skills, or assist with their resume and assist with interviewing. So we're shifting a little bit more from an educational to a job, job opportunity, uh, focus. Um, and, and I think that, we just feel, John feels that's gonna be a little more of a draw, and we'll, we'll make the money, we're putting, the resources we're putting to the Employment Center may be a little more impactful. Um, I think that's about it. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay? Um, I will be, I will, I will not be at the next meeting. I'll be, unfortunately, I'll be missing that, my schedule changed. Um, and Dick will be chairing that meeting, the next, Vince, I mean Dale, and it's Dick, and then it'll be Vince, and then it'll be Mr. May here, our rookie. I am, I am in control.
What a meeting.
Yeah, so, and next, next month, we will be doing the public hearing on the budget, and then the final approval on, on the budget. Okay? Um, okay, no corris, oh wait, is, we have motion to, I mean, we have motion to approve the reports?
Seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Just a second, Keenly Dante. Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, there's no correspondence, there's no old business, we'll go to new business. Um, we have, speaking of missing a meeting, Resolution 2020-9, uh, board meeting, we're looking to, for a proposal to change the date in August, one week forward. Um, once again, that's, um, there was a, a conflict that, that I, that I had, I don't know if that's gonna be the case. So Paul and I were talking, and we'd just see if it works to move the, uh, the meeting forward one Monday, so as to make it for sure that I'd be able to attend that meeting. Right. So, that's the reason for the change. If there's any problems, that's fine, we don't have to change it, but if that's okay, um, I'd like to get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, so moved and seconded, is there any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Um, can we, so it, we have a motion to, uh, to approve Resolution 2029, board meeting date changed, proposed change in August. Uh, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, we have your tentative budget for the town and general assistance and sewer. Um, if you wanna take a look at that, uh, it's been marked with yellow, um, on your large, a lot of them are the total administrative expenses, or the total commodities and miscellaneous expenses, um, and those are on the, it's largely marked on the totals in the different section. And that's because there was a, an error in the algorithm that, um, that Erica was using in, in putting this together last time. So it's simply, there was an addition error last time, and these are the correct numbers. There's only one other area, there's a, there's a, a change, um, and that's, and we, she, he had left, zeroed out Kristus Victor as zero, but I will let, um, Sue Ellen, our clerk, talk about the agency grants that are proposed here.
Okay. Um, the agency grant committee is composed of myself, Corey, Luanne, who's head of counseling, and two trustees, Dale Nierdowski and Brian May. And, um, we had no new applications until we had Kristus Victor for their Thanksgiving dinner, and that was a little bit of a last minute, 'cause we did give them a one-time grant in December and told them, you know, down the road, that they need to apply through the grant program. So they did that a bit last minute, but that's, that's why we just finished. And we were able to meet with nine agencies. So, now that COVID's over, we're hoping to meet with each agency every three years. We usually have about 30 agencies.
So you'll rotate through them, is what you...
Yeah, yeah. So, and then, um, at the, it's on page three is where the social service, um, grants are. Um, and at the bottom of that, there is emergency funding for $50,000, which we added a couple years ago, because during COVID, we ended up helping pay, um, was it through Journeys?
Journey, yeah, Journey.
To, uh, help pay for people to stay in hotel rooms, 'cause churches and other organizations weren't doing that.
The homeless, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, we, we wanted to keep that emergency funding, just if something comes up in the township during the year, we have that flexibility. So, our final amount is 593,050.
That's right. With the addition, what did you add to that, we're at zeroed out, what did you add to that? What is that amount?
$250.
That's for Kristus Victor?
To Kristus Victor, yeah.
For their, for, what is it for again?
For their Thanksgiving dinner.
Okay.
Which they have about 500 to 600 people they reach out.
Is that homeless people too, or what is that?
Yeah, it's, um, part of it's just open to the community. I know they did bring in different groups of people this year, disabled and that, so, um, when we do get a report from them, we'll get more information.
Right.
But, yeah, they do a really good job with that.
Okay.
What's the number for Kristus Victor?
$250 even. Did I?
Zero.
No, this is for the coming.
That was last year in December.
That was last year.
We gave them 250, but then we told them, if you want...
For this coming year.
This coming year, you need to be part of the grant.
Right.
Apply. So this is a new 250.
Oh, okay.
For this year.
For last and this.
Yeah, 250 each.
Perfect, okay.
Okay.
So what's the, the final number you came up with?
It should be 593 and 50, if I can add.
All right, is there any question for Sue Ellen on the social, on the, uh, agency grants? Um, once again, I appreciate, um, Dale and Brian, and, and the committee of staff that, that does this, because it's important. I think that we at one time had gotten a little loose on this, and we were providing funds for duplicate, for agencies doing duplicate services, for agencies that weren't servicing Elk Grove Township residents. And I, as a result, our, our resources weren't put to their best use, and I think they've done a great job in narrowing this down, and, and I think also holding accountable. Is there, was there a change too, and how is that, how are we doing that now in terms of Sue Ellen, in terms of how they...
Yeah, we, we are doing a couple changes. One of them is, um, we do ask them to give us reports on how many of our residents they serve, and some of the agencies have had a hard time really understanding the boundaries of the township. So we actually have a new, um, paper with a map explaining that, to help them, that will go in our packet. And Corey designed a new form, that is a uniform form that everyone will use when they're reporting their, um, the people that they've helped in the township when they ask for their grant money.
How often do they have to submit their report? Every time they submit an invoice, or how often?
That is a...
When they submit an invoice, um, I mean, contracts say either, um, they are required to submit an invoice, we're still generic, we're gonna change this a little bit, but is it monthly or quarterly? They get a choice.
There's no restriction in the agreement, it doesn't say.
About when they submit an invoice?
Yeah, but we...
About when they submit an invoice? There's no require, what do we, okay.
There's no requirement. We give them guidance, because generally, if it's a, um, new agency, they usually call and say, let's, how do we do this? And so, I tell them, if it's a small grant, you know, they use it all in one month, you know, whatever, that's fine, but I recommend that they continue to give us the, the recap of the people that they're helping in our township, so at the end of the year, the committee will get that result in the following year. The bigger ones, we say, do it quarterly if you want to, or do it monthly, do it any way you want. We just, I just try to encourage them to, uh, do what's easiest for them, 'cause we don't care. When we get the invoice in, as long as they haven't spent all their money, we pay the invoice.
The, the only thing is, we don't want a large agency to come in right before the end, and suddenly, we have to pay a...
And when we have that, we, we talk to them and say, you cannot do that, you need to break it up into quarterly payments, or, you know, every two months, or whatever. We've only had that happen a couple times. Mostly people are good, they'll do it, they'll, they'll break it out in an even pattern. It's usually not a problem. We've only had that happen a couple times, which is...
Yeah. Okay. Um, any other questions for, for Sue Ellen?
I will just say, it's very helpful, 'cause it used to just be the board of trustees who decided these numbers with the supervisor. It's really helpful having Corey and Luanne on the committee, because they deal with these agencies all the time, so we get a lot of good input that we wouldn't know.
Okay. All right, so that, um, is there any other questions? As I've said, the only real changes from last time were agency grant, where their, those numbers were added in, and then the totals, which were due to a, an addition error. Um, is there any other questions on any of the other items here? If we approve this tentative, then like I said, there will be a public hearing next month, right before the meeting, and then, in the meeting, in the meeting itself, you will, the budget will be approved. So, and if anything comes up, if you're looking at this, and I got to get a Roden Bridge here still, but if you're looking at this and something jumps out at you, we still can, we still can make adjustments, um, but the sooner we identify that, the better. Okay? Um, I've got, um...
Are you, I don't know if you were big, something, said something, anybody before I, where we talked about the spreading of utilities, that...
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't say that.
Next thing.
Yeah, that, what we've done too, is we've allocated the, uh, utility costs, um, by, by square footage, by, uh, in other words, we've, we haven't, we've allocated it by, 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 by space, by what space they're, they're using, they're using or making up here.
The departments?
Part, yeah, the departments.
Okay.
Well, it's a portion of the common area.
Yeah.
They're probably a portion of it.
Yeah, everyone splits up the common area, but, but, but we're, we're trying to allocate this, um, in, in, on a more usage basis than, than on just some arbitrary, arbitrary number. Okay? Um, and that, we'll be doing that going forward. I also point out too, on this budget, like I've said, we, this, this is now, we asked the department heads to come up with their budget, and they submit a budget, they, they sit down with me with a department, um, review, we do it twice a year, and the one in, the one in late fall is, is in connection with the, with them putting together the budget. And then, we kinda talk through it, and then they complete their budget, turn it into the administrator, and the administrator and the, and Erica, our finance director, will go through it, and will, and will, will tweak it, or, or get back to the, the department that said, we're, we need to make this change or that change. Then, once they've gone through it, then, then I'll take a look at it, and then it comes to the board, and, and for the first look, and then, then the second look, and then the final. Um, so, we're trying, I'm trying, what I've tried to do is have the department heads take more responsibility for their budget, so that they know what they're asking us to spend money on, and, and, and if they are asking us to spend money, well then, what, how are you gonna offset that, or what is the reason why we should add more, so they're more aware of what they're actually asking for. Okay, um, that's the, let's, let's see on this, we have the, so we have the 2023, 2024 tentative budget for town fund, general assistance, and sewer. Is there a motion to approve Resolution, I mean, 2023, 24 tentative budget for those three areas?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Um, is there any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Sorry. Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, um, same thing on the, um, on the resolution, on the resolution, on 2023, 2024 tentative budget for the road department. Um, as you know, we still have a levy for the, for the, even though we disestablished the, um, the road district, we still have a levy and a budget, and that's because we still have responsibility for the unincorporated areas, which is a small area in Mount Prospect. Um, and then, three, four areas, Braniger, Martha, by Alexian Brothers on the south side, across from Alexian Brothers, Martha and, um, Link, Martha and Lincoln, then Rapolo, uh, that subdivision, and then a, a little area way down by Devon, uh, Central, uh, area called Central, and then we still have the road by the cemetery. Um, and so we have outsourced those responsibilities. We're paying Mount Prospect, and we're paying Elk Grove to cover, uh, unincorporators in their respective areas. Um, and then we've outsourced the, um, the road repair, maintenance, we've outsourced the brush pickup, and then we have Art is doing the, the plowing in our parking lot, and is basically providing sort of a field, is a field rep to make sure stuff is getting done properly and everything. So, uh, we still have responsibilities, that, so therefore, we still need a budget, um, and, and that's what, that's what this is, and that's what this is for. Um, as you can see, there's no changes to the tentative we had last time, except the totals. Uh, we had to adjust the totals again for certain reason.
Never rebuttal.
There were changes.
Oh, you've been...
I missed it when I sent it out. Uh, I noticed that there was, uh, a formula that was wrong on the last page, uh, of the two of the budget, and so that was changed, uh, the 149,000, and then there, we didn't have anything in one of those other lines, which was 5,000. So, um, not too big of a difference in the formula, so, so the 312,700 is correct.
Okay. All right, and the, uh, the Roden Bridge still owes, what is, what is the outstanding amount of the loan to the town?
Um, I think it's around 200.
So they owe, owe the town 200,000 still, 'cause we had lent them money to do the repairs on the roads, um, and so they're paying that down. The, the sale of the Mack truck will take 100,000 of that out of there, and then whatever the sale on the other equipment is, we'll take, take it out of there as well too.
So what you're saying is, is 200,000 total?
200,000 totally.
For the Mack truck, or after?
No, 200,000 is what the, the Roden Bridge owes the town from the loan that they took in order to repair the roads. The Mack truck, we sold for 100,000, so that'll reduce, that'll reduce the loan when they pay us.
To 100,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, so there's, any questions on, well, let's see, do you have a motion to approve the tentative budget for the Road District?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any questions, any further questions on the Road District tentative budget? Okay, if not, a roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Any discussion or comments from the trustees and/or the assessor? We'll even let her ask a question if she wants. No, anything else? Okay. I think, like I said, the, the main item next month will be the final approval of the budget. I also just an interesting comment, we have a, we have a policy on dogs in the building coming up.
Go ahead.
Because in supervisors' meetings that I've had here recently, those supervisors are starting to have problems with people, employees bringing dogs in to work with them, or people bringing dogs into the food pantry, and, and service dogs are fine, but we have to have a policy on the other stuff. And I thought, I thought our attorney would give me, like, two paragraphs?
Oh, no.
It's like 10 pages. These attorneys are sending their kids to college, I think. So that will probably be dealt with then, too, but you'll get it. I just was a side comment on that. Okay, if there's nothing else, do I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned.